I'll call the 2024 meeting of the Kickwary School Board to order and as always, Marla will begin with roll call.
Isaac Wallace.
Here.
Earl Wallace.
Here.
Dennis Mathis.
Here.
Earl Schrader.
Here.
Rich James.
Here.
Peggy McCormick.
Here.
And Scott Walton.
Here. Thank you, Marla. Second up tonight, Kim Asmey, the proof of publication of the agenda.
I Kimberly Johnson hereby certify that notice of the Kickwary Schools Wednesday, October ninth, regular school board meeting was caused to be published at the campus on ten three twenty four and posted on billboards in the following places on ten seven twenty four, Kickapoo, H twelve School Building, Citizens First Bank, by all the host office and the school website.
Thank you, Kim. And board members, having had the agenda in your hand for the past week, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion by Earl, second by a cop over there, to approve, all in favor.
I oppose.
We have an approved agenda. Audience, visitors and board members, Marla, did we have anyone?
No.
Any board members with?
I was just gonna talk about, I'm newly on the recent fire department now, not sure how that happened, but we came up and, I said yes. We came and did a training here at my go crisis active shooter training, the whole fire department, by all the fire department, there was a couple of large guys in the sheriff's department. And it was very interesting. Obviously, it was on the like rescue, rescue recovery side of it instead of like being in the school, but it was still very eye opening to, to go through that and see, you know, and the things that you would have to deal with, which it was, you know, it was a bunch of adults, well, Brandon was there, but, and like the final scenario we did, they were like, make as much noise as you possibly can because if you're going into a situation like that and you're in the kindergarten room and you have a bunch of kindergartners in here, they're not gonna be being quiet, they're going to be screaming and crying and stuff like that. So it was really, it was even being, like, I wasn't a rescuer, I was a patient in that scenario and it was still stressful for me with all of the noise that we were all making. So it was very eye opening, so.
Good to hear that training's taking place. Is that a annual or is it?
Um, yeah, I think, I think every two years, right? I think is what they said.
They did it last year, so it's been at least the last two in a row that they've done it. So usually, I think at least every year, if not every year.
Thanks, Peggy. Anybody else have any thoughts? And none will move on then to expense vouchers and receipts. I have one question and sure it's been described for me before, what is sparsity?
Well, that's just part of a categorical aid that we get from the state.
It's based on number of students and is it, is it, is it?
I think it's linked with that.
Yeah, because I think it's number of miles you have to ride your buses and number of students you have because it's more expensive if you're running that bus rather than not having those kids to pick up.
The overall rule?
Yeah. And large, especially the larger.
So it's hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. I saw, this is under check report, page three, I guess. A quarterly payment to CISA three was forty-nine thousand dollars. Is that a quarter of, I, I remember we approved that agreement, but I didn't think it was two hundred thousand dollars.
So that includes quite a few different things that we're paying for. It's part of our speech and language, physical therapy, occupational therapies, um, and then there's just a couple other.
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So it's like there's two staff.
Yeah, yeah, there's.
Two classes, yeah.
You did, so I hear anybody else. Hearing no other discussion then, I'll entertain a motion to approve this month's expense vouchers and receipts. Motion by Isaac, second by Rich to approve, all in favor.
I oppose.
Motion passes. Number of items on the consent agenda is usual, I'll just redraw them before we get to the motion. Minutes from our September ninth regular board meeting. Three early graduation requests, names listed there. And nicely, I love this part, every month, a number of donations, a loaded dirt from Letky excavating for the sign and placement. Daddy, Danny and Jody Ames donated a hundred, a hundred dollars in some notebooks. Joe Fortney donated blacktop patching supplies and Campier Financial, two hundred dollars for the Feed the Future Fund. And then approval of, last thing on the consent agenda, approval of Casey Goodrich as the future teacher's advisor. Any amendments, changes or thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
What's that?
One second.
Yeah.
Thank you, Earl and Rich. Motion by Earl, second by Rich to approve tonight's, tonight's consent agenda, all in favor.
I oppose.
Motion passes. Moving on then to the informational agenda with a couple of discussion items, beginning with the COVID practices.
Is it too late to let Hannah go first?
Oh, that's, I am absolutely thrilled by that.
It's discussion until we come around.
Yeah, let's just go to item C first.
Yeah.
We'll talk to you later.
Um, where is the, our point or do we?
Always.
I said, um, I don't know, I thought I was like, how do I pull it up? I can pull it up, I just gotta go. I emailed it to you guys this morning, last night.
Okay, I didn't think you're gonna, I thought you were just talking about it.
I can, but I'm.
But we, we got a shorter agenda, so she's got slides, it's easy.
I can run my screen.
Yeah, I can show you that too.
That's okay. Do you want to pass me then? We can set this up and you guys go pass.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, we should probably have came for a full discussion though.
You guys usually like look at Chromebook up somewhere or how do you do a PowerPoint?
Over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
I would suggest for the thing.
So Sydney, what are your next steps?
So I can kind of talk about the COVID practices, looking at CDC and what Nurse Trish has recommended. They have now taken. Sorry.
Or the back, or the back.
Basically taking out the stay home for five days and changing that to recommended to stay home for five days, recommended masking for the five days when they return. But then be consistent with, with their policies and staying home until fever free for twenty-four hours.
I thought we already changed that.
Last year, we kept it the same, like five days at home. I don't think many people were actually testing. Um, yeah, but we did remain consistent with.
I guess I thought we changed.
Yeah, yeah, and I thought we recommended for these figures, I thought we had the description that no one's gonna stay home anymore. I'm not gonna say anything, but, but it doesn't matter, it's good to change that.
Yeah, so now I guess we're changing.
And I think maybe other than, and not highlight COVID so much, it's just if your kids are sick, keep them home. I noticed down at Southwest Tech at the regional meeting for WST last night, there were signs up, keep them there on the doors, if you're sick, stay home, you know, and on the, when you walk by their daycare area.
Stay home for twenty-four, fever free, yeah. Yeah, so this was what was on our website and it was our, so we'll change that.
I pulled up the, I haven't even looked at COVID stuff for two years probably, so I pulled up CDC's policy and the only other thing maybe we could talk about is they recommend staying home for twenty, until you're symptom free for twenty-four hours, not just fever free. They talked a lot about respiratory illnesses, season cotton can be a way to transmit the virus. So I, I guess I would recommend you stay home until twenty-four hours without symptoms, asymptomatic or.
The only thing, okay, I don't know, we have kids in my school right now that have started coughing on the first day of school and are still coughing, like the cough just doesn't go away. So I mean, that, that's kind of hard to, because they're, I mean, I'm not gonna keep my kid at home for at least a month and a half because he's coughing either, you know what I mean?
I'm a parent, they get it, it's that morning you wake up.
Because I think all our other medical or sickness policies say twenty-four or fever free, which doesn't always happen.
So we're, we're not gonna off the five Ds. That's a recommendation. Still recommend masking.
Recommended, yeah.
I think they're both recommended, we're just not saying.
Saying they have to.
Yeah, I guess that last bullet. Child is ill with it, I don't want to believe her, this, I mean, it's, I think it's all faded into the background. My mind, we're kind of back to the way, but child is ill with any respiratory illness and I think of snot and phlegm being spewed all over the classroom. They stay home until they're fever free. They could still be spewing. And all those things linger, so you'd have a kid. I don't know what I'm saying. But the CDC site clearly emphasizes a lot beyond, a lot of symptoms beyond just the fever. I guess.
I think that's the issue, they say home, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I guess that's.
Just even some signs for parents as you go into, you know, they're coming in and out, there are parent teacher conferences and then you have people here, which is something to get them thinking about it.
Yeah.
Trish is pretty good when we, the kids that have gone home with fevers.
Yeah.
She's, she's always like, you can't come back tomorrow, okay?
Yeah. Right. And there are some that can go with the cough and then some who are obviously sick.
Right, I was gonna say, and if somebody's sick, I mean, she's still gonna, we're still gonna kind of have parents and have people get them.
Could we, could we even rename the policy, get rid of COVID and just say sickness policy?
That might not be a bad idea. Basically, that's typically.
That's what we're doing, it says.
Pretend we keep out positive tests.
Oh, that's right.
Maybe we start to treat, treat the test as an at-home thing and we don't, it's something parents could use to diagnose their kids, but maybe we don't even have to know about it because like you said last time we discussed is if we get rigid, they're not gonna test or not gonna tell us. Maybe we can take that out.
What do you think, Kim, about now, now certainly just on COVID and just.
Yeah, I think it's just pretty simplistic, the fever free.
Could we put a, not to drop guilt on parents, but we don't want sick kids in school, but like I said, as a parent, the incentive is, I gotta get to work, you're going to school today, thing. Some statement that schools are, you know, to protect the health of our students in the class, please keep us at home, just something like that, so. To know what the parents say, yeah, I guess I can be late to work, so I give my kids take care or whatever. Emphasize the fact that there's more, there are more students in this school than there could. I have to use that reminder when I was kicking jello.
Yeah, yeah. Right, and like Andy said, Nurse Trish is really good to, to grab them and call home. Okay, so we'll change that.
Where does this go? I mean, we.
It has typically, the specific COVID has been on our website because that was a highlight and now it will just be part of our policy or handbook. And then I think a parent might get some kind of reminder when it gets a flu season.
Especially as colds and flu and everything gets.
Right, as a reminder.
You're, you're gonna bring this back as a decision item at some point or is this just?
I think she can just.
So you have enough guidance to. Do we have anything else? Hannah, are you ready? We could jump to you if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still stuck in the past. I only come here once a year, so I'm still, I knew it was like the technology of last year when we're up in the library, but I can just read from the slides like, no, it's kind of.
You can plug it in in there.
We tried.
It won't preview though. Yeah, like the other computer before it worked, but it won't preview on that one, I don't know why. It won't show up on the screen.
I can share this with you guys and I can post it to the pool website, does that help? I'm sorry, Hannah. No, it's okay. Um, so this is the second year our pool has been running, so I just wanted to comment and give you guys an update on how the pool's been doing. Um, so we added hours to the summer pool schedule. We, so we, we, so far, we've been like planning to kick off every summer with a summer school lifeguard training to get high school students trained and then start to work into the summer of the school year. And then right after that training, every pool has to close down for two to three weeks for maintenance. Um, I think Bigley does it in the fall, I think Simon, Simon's might do it in the fall or winter. And since we're a school pool, it just works best for us to close it the last three weeks in June for maintenance. And that's worked really well this summer to do that. So then we, when we finally opened back up again in July, um, we added additional morning lap swims on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays from seven to eight AM. Um, we also added a community requested Tuesday and Thursday night swim from eight to nine, which was really popular. Um, and then we also added every Wednesday night, um, we did like a family swim like at nighttime uh, because community members email me and say, hey, could we have this, who could we have that? And if I get enough feedback, then I added and see what the numbers are. And this summer, we had really good numbers. Um, we also added a Kickapoo School Pool Facebook page, which has been really popular and really helpful for communicating pool closures and schedules, swim lessons and water aerobics. Um, and I updated the pool website on our school website as well. So if anyone goes to our school website, it says pool webpage right there, they can access all the registration information, pool rental information, schedule, so that's been positively received too. Um, and then when the school year started, we had to cut back our hours a little bit because um, sports teams use our school so much and we have more swim lessons and we have just found from our pool use data that our pool gets used a lot by students in sports and extracurriculars and swim lessons, more so than it does during open swim time for the community. Um, so we, the one thing, we, we kept morning lap swim the same on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. We just bumped it back an hour before school, this was the seven. Um, we kept the late night exercise swim on Mondays and Thursday nights. And then we still have open swim every Saturday from two to five. Oh, and we added a third, uh, every third Monday. So once a month, we do have a late night family swim because there are some families that are always busy on the weekends and they really want to use the pool, so, um, once a month, we have a late night swim for them. Um, and then we still use our, I'm gonna show you guys this because it's cool, it's just colors. So this is the calendar that we use to schedule everything from the pool and it's all color coded. So what you see in green is all the open swim times and, you know, swim times for the community, so lap swim, open swim. All the yellows are sports teams that reserve it, um, oranges are all the pool rentals and then reds are any like emergency pool charges or pool charges, you have other events that are happening. Um, so yeah, our pool gets used multiple times a day, every single day except for Sundays. That's the one day the pool gets a break. Um, we have seven high school lifeguards this year. Um, four of them are seniors. So we are gonna be doing a special January lifeguard training so that we can get enough people to replace those seniors before they graduate. Um, most seniors really cut back their hours in May because they just have so many events going on. So I would like lifeguards to replace those seniors before May and before I have a baby. Um, also exciting, we have six staff lifeguards that just renewed their certification last weekend. Um, they are Sam Geary and Dustin Clements, the PE teachers. Jessica Nelson teaches fifth grade and water aerobics. Alyssa Mathis teaches third grade. Um, Taylor Schrader is a resource teacher in the elementary and then myself. Um, and then also exciting, in November, we have five more staff members taking the certification. There are Megan Chulo, she's a math teacher. Um, she's also a volleyball coach and an advisor and so she wants to get her lifeguard certification so she can bring her volleyball team into the pool for practices. Um, Lori Martin, the science teacher is getting certified because she's also the, the advisor for the sea perch team. So she wants to be able to practice sea perch whenever. Um, Lori Kaufman is a high school resource teacher that works with students that use the pool. Um, Jeremy Lee, science teacher, he's a track coach, so he wants to be able to bring his track team in whenever. Um, and Leah Guttenek is the girls wrestling coach and she also wants to be able to practice in the pool. Um, so it's so helpful to have staff lifeguards because they're able to safely bring their classes and extracurricular groups into the pool without having to find and hire an additional lifeguard. Um, so the more lifeguards we can have as staff, the more pool can get used.
Is there any general rule for how many kids one lifeguard can have though, how many students?
Yeah, the last time I checked the state law, it said twenty-five swimmers per lifeguard. Yeah, and look, if you look at like cross country, they've got three lifeguards on their team. So usually we.
Yeah, if they didn't know.
Um, I also sent out a survey to all the past and present lifeguards, just to kind of feel their thoughts on things and it was really positively received. Um, most of lifeguards said that they were really happy with the job and the number of hours they got to work at the pool, they were happy with their wage. Um, the swim lesson teacher is also said they loved teaching water group lessons, um, but most were not interested in teaching private swim lessons. I've been getting some community members asking about private swim lessons. Um, and we're still trying to figure out and coordinate it, but most high school lifeguards are just too busy and don't feel comfortable doing the private swim lessons like our neighboring pools offer. Um, we have two certified pool operators. DJ McNamer is the maintenance director of Kickapoo Schools. He does a phenomenal job at keeping our pool super clean and running smoothly every day. Um, I have a ton of people that come in to use the pool and they say, this is like the nicest, cleanest pool I've ever swam in. And I said, it is the nicest, cleanest pool you've ever swam in because DJ does a really good job. Um, and then he also got Dan, the daytime custodian, to get his certified pool operator license so that if DJ is busy with other tasks or if he's gone on the weekends, Dan can fill in and do all the tests and the maintenance and things because, um, our pool needs twenty-four hour care. Um, so we keep pool use data every time the pool gets used for open swim or lap swim. Um, the lifeguards record who used the pool using a Google form and it all spits it out on an Excel sheet. Um, and then we also use that shared pool calendar, I showed you that, keep track of data too. So I don't know if you guys remember from last year, but we, the first year we were open, we were open like five to six days a week and we looked at the pool data and just showed that our pool wasn't getting used during all those times. So we, we decreased our community open swim lap swim hours and increased all the after school use of sports teams, water aerobics, swim lessons, and it's been really positively received and it's proven to be a more popular use of our pool. Um, so this year, we had a total of eight hundred and thirty-six people come to all of our open swims, lap swims. And last year, we had eight hundred and seventy-eight and I'm like really happy that that's a pretty close number because like I said, we cut our pool hours in half about and we still had eight, eight hundred some people, so.
Eight hundred vi- eight hundred visitors or eight hundred different people?
Like eight, like total, there were eight hundred and thirty-six visitors, people that came to the pool, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was, I didn't know what you put on your form.
Um, and then I have some pretty graphs, I don't know.
You're gonna send us the.
Yeah, I'll send it to you and I can post it to the pool website too, but, um, this is our morning lap swim average. So the top number, if you can see, is five. So like in our pool, because of its size, like five people is kind of the comfortable limit. I mean, more than five and it gets kind of crowded and people are swimming into each other. So we always have at least one person typically and it's, um, grown a lot, especially this summer. We usually had between three and six swimmers every morning, um, which is really good for us. And the night lap swim was super popular. We usually had between like five and eight people come. So that, you know, the average was four because there was a couple little things, but, um, so that's why I continued it into the fall. Um, so far, September was a lower month with an average of one person coming every night, but we'll see what the rest of the year brings. It was a lot of, um, moms that used to be on high school swim teams that were coming like late at night after they put their kids to bed this summer. Um, so I'm sure they're just busy with the beginning of the school year, but they were really thankful that we opened it up for a night lap swim. Um, this is our Saturday open swim average. It's grown a lot. July, uh, the average number of people was about eighteen people in open swim, which is awesome.
Well, that's good.
See, our, our averages are way higher this year than they were last year. Um, and then that night open swim I was talking about for families, we had a ton of people in July, the average was fifteen. I think one night we had like thirty-five swimmers on a Wednesday night. Um, and we're still averaging about like eight people for open swim. So it varies a lot. The lifeguards will say, oh my gosh, like twenty-four people came and then another week and it's like, oh, two people came. So it just varies a lot. Um, out of district swimmers is crazy. So we used to, this is how many out of district swimmers we used to have and this summer it really shot up, like on average, no, this is total. So a total in August, we had twenty-five out of district swimmers use our pool. And then I have more numbers to show that a lot more out of district come in using the pool in different ways. So this year, we had a total of ninety-one out of district pool passes purchased. So any, anytime somebody comes like on Saturday, use the pool, they pay five dollars, so that's a pool pass. Um, and then for the first time ever, we had somebody buy a yearly adult pass for a hundred and eighty dollars, so that was exciting. Um, last year, we only had fifty-nine out of district swimmers and this year we're ninety-one, so more people are using our pool. Um, sports that use it cross-country practices every single Wednesday in the fall. Um, wrestling practices, most Wednesdays in the winter or at least one day a week. Um, the sea perch team used it many times last year to practice with their underwater robots and they hosted a competition. Um, and then they advanced to nationals in Washington DC. So that was probably the coolest use of our pool with that new sea perch team. Um, other sports have used it for special practices or end of the season pool parties. Um, and the pool is free for all Kickapoo School teams and clubs. Um, if they do not have their own lifeguard on their team, then they just pay a lifeguard the twelve dollars an hour fee. Um, PE classes, Dustin Clements and Sam Geary use the pool several times throughout the year to teach elementary swim lessons and middle school, high school PE units such as water polo, swim fitness and basic life saving skills. Um, they graciously provide swimsuits to any student who does not have one. I organized them this summer. I couldn't believe the ratio between like the guys' swimsuits and the girls' swimsuits, but they have a lot to hand out, which is awesome. Um, the only students who don't swim in our pool are juniors and seniors who don't take PE. So almost every student swims in our pool for class. Um, and Dustin Clements also takes his adaptive physical education student swimming every single week. Um, pool rentals, this year we had thirteen rentals. Um, we also had a new reoccurring rental from. Um we also had a new reoccurring rental from Michelle Veal Hovers group, if you remember, she used to work here. Um she comes almost every Tuesday morning unless, you know, someone's sick or can't make it, but she's pretty consistent every Tuesday this year. Um PE classes do take priority, so she knows that there's a PE unit going on and she won't come that Tuesday. Um last year, we had twenty pool rentals. So we are down a little bit in pool rentals. I don't know if the shiny wore off or if I need to. Do a better job on advertising, but um thirteen's still pretty good here. I don't know if you can remember in the past what it used to be with the old pool.
Yeah, I just, I don't remember exactly, but there was a number of birthday parties. It was usually birthday parties.
Um Jess Nelson continues to teach water aerobics two evenings a week. Um participants pay five dollars a class. Um last year, she did a semester at a time. You could either pay five dollars, you know, as you go. Or you could pay for the entire semester. So she had thirty-four total people on her ro- roster that would kind of come and go. Um this year, to make scheduling easier, because sometimes she would have to like. Cancel a class or there'd be bad weather or there was a sporting event. To make it easier, we just decided to switch it to month by month. So people sign up for a month at a time. And she had twenty-one people in September and seven people in October. So her numbers are still pretty good, like those thirty-four people that would sign up for the whole semester. She said, sometimes I'd have three people in a class, sometimes I'd have. Twenty people in a class. It would just, you know, vary a lot from class to class. Um swim lessons, our program is growing. I'm most excited about swim lessons because I love to teach kids anything. And I firmly believe that like a pool cannot survive if you don't have a swim lesson program, just like. A basketball program will struggle if you don't have like an elementary basketball program. Um so when we first started in the fall of twenty twenty-three, we had sixty-two students. In the spring of twenty twenty-four, we had seventy-six students and twelve of them were out of district. In the summer, for summer school, we had a hundred and fourteen. The first summer, we only had seventy-five. And then in the fall, this fall of twenty twenty-four, we had eighty-nine students and thirty-seven of them were from out of district. So when I see that, I'm like, could this help with open enrollment numbers?
Yeah, when you count out, you're not counting our open enrolled students, right?
Nope, open. So what, so there's two fees. If you are an open enrolled student. Or a taxpayer in the Kickapoo school district, you pay forty dollars for eight lessons. And if you are out of district, then you pay sixty dollars for each lesson. So it like gets them in, but we also make like a little more money off of them, which is cool. Um I've also been hearing lots of positive comments from the parents who are out of district. Um one parent said, wow, I didn't even know this pool existed. It's so nice and my son is thriving in swim lessons here. At a different pool he used to go to, he was terrified. We will be coming to swim lessons at Kickapoo from here on. And then um there's a lot of, um I have a friend who homeschools and so she's a part of all these homeschool groups, so she shared the registration like with all her homeschool friends. This is a lot. And so we uh we have a lot of homeschool parents and one of them said. Oh my gosh, if this whole homeschool thing doesn't work out, I'm gonna bring my kids to Kickapoo because this school is so nice and everyone is so nice here. Um. Uh we have a lot of donations this year. So community members have donated life jackets, puddle jumpers, water wings. Different name term. Um we use those during open swim and really often for pool parties. Um swim belts, which the kids have nicknamed jetpacks. So these are these really awesome new things. If you get a chance to look at them, they. They're like these rainbow colored turtle shells or jetpack that help them float a little bit in the water, but not too, not as much as a life jacket. So it just kind of gives them like training wheels when they're learning how to swim. Um and it's been really helpful in lessons this fall. So I think we got like twenty-five of those donated from community members, which is awesome. Um we have laundry baskets donated for pool storage um and water weights for water aerobics classes. Um the Booster Club donated goggles. Um we had a hundred and fifty dollar donation from Andy Melandora on behalf of his dad for any swim lesson storage materials. Um Leah Guttenek recently donated a donation box. It sits on our pool desk and um you know, people just put cash in it as they please and I think we've made thirty dollars so far. And then Catherine Miller also donated a water resistant Bluetooth speaker that we use for playing music during open swim times and and telling them what music in the pool. And I think that is the end of my presentation.
Yes, thank you.
That was, yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Well, just to comment quick, I I remember the discussion we had about creating a pool coordinator position with the hopes that would energize. I think mission accomplished. This is fantastic. Really nicely done. Not just the presentation, but all the work that's led to increased use of the pool. And one other thought I had is you were going through those numbers, um not to revisit the pool issue, but. Um it was an issue that was in everybody's minds for a year and a half, couple of years. Would we want to think about some sort of newspaper article or something on our website, just talking about the use of the pool? Out of history students, number of adults during the classes, just to let folks know that the investment. These are the things I think we need to.
Yeah, care is not one of my strengths, so I appreciate the ideas. I need ideas with the art.
And and maybe those out of district students come in wanting to take lessons, say, they're free if you transfer in.
Summer school, they're free and you get a P E class at least twice a year, not more.
It is, I think it is a selling point for those, like you said, other other districts. Well, thank you very much.
She also has a packet of information.
Maybe just before we disappear and and forget about that, we talked about some sort of outreach document or what, whatever it is, website, Facebook. F P F News. Um those things won't happen unless somebody. They're not gonna raise my hand because I don't have all that information, but could you work with Anna to make sure that. Alright, so we got a couple of things left on the informational agenda. That was, she's energetic. I was tired until she. Um possible snow days.
Well, this is just in here for a reminder because we changed it last year, but it, and I. I just wanted us all to be informed here um that we had agreed upon the four days built in for students and then two for staff members. The two for staff members was consistent. The two additional days that the the students had offered snow days, the teachers were um engaged. Um doing work. They just were not face-to-face days. And they reported um to their building principals.
Yes.
It was approved. Work and dusting deer heads was not.
I don't have a deer head in my office.
Is that's.
Inside joke.
The first snow day, students have off and staff check in with their principals, same the second day and then the next two everybody's.
Probably the other way because what if we only use two? Not that that has ever happened that often. Really? No snow days?
You're lucky.
Not to make, not not to make a short agenda long, but I was thinking about the work you did to actually zero in on. Our whatever it is, um in-person requirements.
Oh, yeah.
And it was way less than we thought, like we, which gave us the confidence to build in for snow days, but there's still. So what what happens with, I guess what I'm asking, what happens with the fifth, sixth and seventh snow day? We don't really have to make that up according to the state, right?
Right.
But we've, what we've run the issue of what do we do about paying staff? We're not gonna run it how many times? I mean, some obviously that are hourly, just aren't getting paid period. If us are gonna get paid, they don't run a row, the. Cook doesn't get paid if they don't come in and cook, but you know, so I, there'd be some questions that had.
I I agree, would have to be a discussion, but I know a teacher, like I said. But spends an awful lot of time just as part of the work week outside the in-class hours. Either she's not home till five thirty. I mean, teachers, it would be a benefit. They could squeeze those Saturday afternoon or, you know. Wednesday night from nine thirty to eleven grading J's. If they. If they were told that fifth snow day, you're paid, just an idea. I mean, we don't have to get into this in detail. Uh this is prep time, grading time, creating great lesson plans, do research, do readings, you know what I mean? Or what do you call it, prep time or work time?
Prep, yeah, I guess.
I mean, I, I think the teachers would appreciate it. The time without students in front of them to develop lessons, reviewing textbooks, whatever teachers do. You know what I mean?
Some schools have more in-service days, so the staff have more time to. To do that sort of thing, but I think in the next couple of months, we bring a new calendar forward and then you'll have all of those number of minutes right in front of you as well.
When was graduation?
Twenty-third. Yeah, I think I had twenty-third.
And then the quarterly budget report.
Well, unfortunately not be as exciting as Anna's. But before I get into it, I do just wanna preface by saying that since our budget still is not set and I actually don't know until next Tuesday. When our final um general aid will be from the state, um none of these budgets are set and shown yet because that doesn't happen until our annual meeting on the thirtieth. So these numbers still could change, unfortunately. Um but that's, that's just what we're working with right now. Um did anyone have any questions for me prior to me rolling through it? If not, I will get going. Um right away, everything looks good. We look pretty much right on track with everything. There were a couple of areas that I did just want to touch base on. Um we're a quarter of the way through our fiscal year already, so I kind of expect most of our numbers to be right around that twenty-five percent range. One that I want to touch on right away is our salary and fringe. Those so far are a lot lower than twenty-five percent and that is because of how we pay our teachers. So they have their accelerated contracts. So in June, they actually get paid for June, July and August. So it's kind of back and loaded on that and our teachers are our biggest piece of the pie in our salary and fringe benefits. So that is why those salary and fringes are under that twenty-five percent so far. Then working down through um our elementary expenses, right now on that Fund Ten purchase service, we're over that twenty-five percent area. And that is because um actually that full amount is for a reading horizons tool. Uh reading horizons, which is a tool that Tracy Silverson uses in her classroom. Um there really isn't a ton that goes into that budget, but that is one of them and that makes up quite a bit of that um those expenses. Um along with that, uh the other objects for elementary expenses, that includes some of our membership fees. Um. A lot of those come right away at the beginning of the year. That's a majority of what that budget is, is just some membership fees for the school and for Amy to be a part of. So we probably won't have a ton of other expenses in there, so it's very front-end loaded. So that's why it's used well over fifty percent already. Um middle school, high school expenses, all of those look pretty good, right in line where I was expecting them to be. Um same with our co-curricular expenses and our computer technology. They're kind of right where I'm expecting them to be. But then our district office expenses, um same thing with the elementary expenses, that other objects line. That's where all of our membership renewals go into. Um some of the memberships for the district office include our Wisconsin Rural School Alliance. Um our weekend membership, our Wisconsin Association of School District Administrator membership. So that's why that one is used more than that twenty-five percent where I want it to be at at this point. Um just because all those memberships come to right at the beginning of the year. Um and then our insurance expense summary. So these insurances aren't our health insurance and stuff like that. This is our property and our liability auto insurances. Um and what you're looking at are premium expenses for the year and I, just like our memberships, all of those get paid right away in July and August. So I expect that budget to be right around that ninety percent. Um I do budget a little bit more than what we know at this point. Um just because another thing that's gonna go in there is that new bus premiums, but we don't know what it is until we get the bus. So that's all dependent. So I just kind of use my best estimate of what I think might be common, give myself a little cushion room, but that's kind of right where I'm expecting it to be. Then looking at our HSA expenses, so you would think this would align with our salary and fringes, but it doesn't. Because we pay our, anyone that's on our health insurance, we pay a portion into their HSA account. But it's split up differently. We make three payments throughout the year and actually a third of their HSA benefits that we pay into them gets paid to them on September tenth. So that aligns with where it should be just because of how we make those payments. Then on the second page. All of these budgets look good, kind of right where they're supposed to be. None of them are throwing any concern to me, making me nervous at all. Um a lot of them are well under that twenty-five percent where I would be concerned if they were over. Um. Yeah, all of them. So far, I think the budget looks pretty good, but like I said, a lot of our original budgets are gonna, could possibly change once I know for sure. What we're getting for state aid and we'll find that on a Tuesday.
I really come in to appreciate these updates and it's, it's, I'm glad to see in the numbers, it's kind of learning the budgeting process. Different budget categories. So thank you.
Yeah.
So the the big revenue, you know, is eight. When uh you and Melissa and Kim modeled these initially, you had our most recent enrollment numbers, right? So it probably is not gonna change much.
It shouldn't change much. Um right now, I was basing all of my information off of the estimates that have been given. But none of that is final. They should be close, but I won't know for sure until October fifteenth, which makes this first. Quarter of the year running difficult because you don't, you don't know what you're for sure getting for revenue. Um but my thought is that it's, it really shouldn't change much.
And I hate to bring this up, but any idea what we're gonna lose to voucher students?
I have no idea. That's another thing I learned on the fifteenth is what, what does this spend out for voucher payments, but. Yeah, right now, it's all a big, it's all a big secret to me.
Do we?
I'm sure that's the way they like it right now. On the food service one, that's actually negative now at this point, is that? I know, I can't remember what we did. There were some things over the summer that's in there that expense wise. And they have their own funds, so they may be negative here, but they have their own, what is that, reserve fund.
Yes, yep. And then, yeah, and with the beginning of the year, it's getting all the stock in and just. Getting everything situated and Heather is doing a wonderful job. Um. I think from what I've heard, staff are really like, I don't know if you guys have heard any different, she's. A lot of good energy, very excited about what she's doing, so. Yeah, so far, I think we've had a, on my end budgetary wise, we've had a positive start to the year, but. I'm hoping that doesn't change when I get our final state aid numbers.
Just, just remember, no panic at all.
Yes, that's what I'm telling myself. Don't panic. You can't panic because you don't know what to panic about yet.
Thank you, Allison. Everybody, Ally, if I'm not mistaken, that brings us to the end of the. And by Ally, if I'm not mistaken, that brings us to the end of the informational agenda, so next up, item eight, superintendent's report, Kim.
Okay, and I, I had in my report, I had talked to Heather just to kind of check base and see how she was doing and if she had any concerns. And, um, she absolutely loves the job, she takes pride in what she does, the kitchen crew is working like a dream team. Um, so we couldn't be in a better place, she's really taken us, um, and taken the program by storm, she's done a great job. She was also selected by, um, what are they called here? It's a healthy meals incentives, so out of three people, or out of the entire group of, of schools, they have chosen three staff members to attend this conference in Nashville, um, completely free of charge, and they would also pay four hundred dollars for a substitute um, to cover her while she is gone, um, just a lot of different training on healthy food choices. Um, so what an honor to be chosen. She right now is, is not really comfortable with leaving and going, um, because she feels that the fair and horse and cultural and the banned pizzas, um, has taken her away from really doing what she wants to do, so she wa, she isn't so sure she's gonna take advantage of that. But that was quite an honor that she was one chosen to go, um, and attend that course. So we're awfully proud of her and grateful for the work that she's doing. Um, I also wanted to report on our enrollment. Um, so what we do have for open enrolled in students, we have one hundred and twenty. Last year, we were at one hundred and five. Um, our open enrolled out students, last year, we were at fifty-two, this year, we are at fifty-six. Um, so still really healthy, open enrolled in group of students.
What's the gain in that, sixteen or?
Sixty-four. The net, yeah, and hundred and twenty, cut one hundred and fifty-six going out, is that what you mean? Somewhere else.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
And then multiply that by whatever.
Oh, compared to last year.
Compared to last year, yeah, I mean, that's a net gain.
Over the numbers again?
Fifteen and fifteen-two.
Hundred and twenty in.
And last year was?
One hundred and five.
Wow.
Sounds fifteen.
In fifteen, so we lost.
And sixteen, so we gained nine.
Nice.
Yeah.
It's maybe, maybe thousand.
Right, and our enrollment, um, that means what's in, we have four hundred and sixty-five students. Um, and that has us down by five students from last year. Um, and our total FTE, meaning our mem, our, um,
Full-time equivalent.
District, right, full-time equip, but those in our district
Yep.
are three hundred and eighty-six, and that means that our large class goes only counted as a point six.
What was only counted as a point six?
Uh, four point six.
And that's this year. Okay, so do, and do, do you also have our three-year, you know, how the, everything's based on that three-year average thing?
Um, our current three-year average, if off the top of my head, is I think four oh seven.
Okay. I knew we were still.
We know, maybe I asked this before, but I got really excited when you, a few months back, talked about the jump in pre-K enrollment, pretty significant. We know how many of those students are open and old.
So we did.
Thirteen or something.
Thirteen, wasn't it?
I think so, thirteen.
So over a third.
Yeah. We do use this when we, we get the, when we get them.
Basically.
We have that.
Yeah.
That's, that's, you.
Absolutely. Um, then I also wanted to bring, um, this accountability mindset. Um, is based, this John Tanner, the author of this book, is doing an, um, induction or he's sharing, um, in a Zoom call that I'm inviting you, if you have time and you have any interest, um, on October fifteenth from ten to twelve. Um, and his research is really about the last two milestones in educational accountability that were produced, were a nation at risk in nineteen eighty-three, and then the no child left behind in two thousand and two. And he talks about, um, we are embarking on that twenty-year plan again, really feels that he wants educators at the table. He typically does a very large national, um, stage where he speaks and shares the research and, um, and his, his efforts to really bring forth what we want to hold, um, what we want to, what we measure, what do we want to accomplish, um, accountability, and how, um, effective companies, businesses, schools, um, are accountable. Helping kids, helping all kids leave school with skills needed for life. Um, so basically, um, he wants educators to come together around a common vision about what do we want? What is a great accountability system that's good for students, parents, communities, and schools? Outcomes that matter to our community, um, really based on a lot of core values. Um, but he is offering, we would be some of the first schools in Wisconsin. Um, and that includes right now Westby, um, Kickapoo, and, um, Upinah in
Royal.
Royal, yeah. So really kind of a, a sweet deal because he typically doesn't meet in such small groups. Um, but he's willing to meet with us and kind of share, um, just because he's passionate about education and doesn't want necessarily business people setting the tone for what do schools need to be accountable. And basically that, um, you know, what you, you, you can write your own story, basically, if you don't do a great job of accounting for what you do, it looks, you, you take the risk that it never happened. And I think now when we're speaking on behalf of, um, voucher programs and, um, the direction that public schools are going and kind of the conversations about public schools, it's a great time for us to stand up and share our story. Um, how you account for what you do matters as much as what you do. Um, and so I think he's gonna offer a really great conversation and, um, give us some feedback about what are the benefits of public education and how do we share our story? And how do we, um, bring our community together to talk about, um, what we want our kids to be accountable for? And it's not always in the test scores as much as that's what, you know, the state is wanting to recognize and value. But, um, for the kids to move into, um, and have healthy, strong lives emotionally and with, uh, mental health. Um, there's a, a bigger piece that we really want to be, um, making sure that we are sharing with our communities and that we are holding our students accountable for. So I will send out a link and you are welcome to join, it's going to be a small group. Um, and John Tanner will, will lead us through kind of his different, his research behind how do we, how do we share our story and how do we, um, how do we bring forth what we want to be accountable for and recognizable as public school systems? So I'm gonna share that link with you on October fifteenth, you're welcome to join us. We have you superintendents, I think some of the school board members will be invited, and the principals, if you're interested. Um, I think we can, we can begin the process of having that conversation in our smallville, Wisconsin area, much like our, our voucher program has taken off and, um, or our messaging has taken off and people are becoming more aware of, um, the impact that that has on public schools as well.
Can I just ask, so this is a online webinar type thing?
Yeah, he, um, yeah, he will actually be, so it'll be a Zoom meeting, so it'll be a small group of us. Um, kind of collaborating with members of the Westby School Board and Westby Administration Team, um, and Scott Upinah. Um, he was trying to bring a few more schools because it's not, there's not a lot being done with this accountability mindset in Wisconsin. Um, so trying to start the conversation, I guess.
Can I share something I saw a week or so ago? That in total is all about accountability from the students. By your view, it was, uh, I was gonna share it with everybody on the board, but I couldn't figure out how. Um, but it was some survey of a, a large sample of public school teachers. And there were a lot of aspects to it, but the, the core part of it that I read, took the time to read, essentially was asking them what, what hinders them in providing services to their kids. And it was like a, in the form of a top ten list, and every one of them had to do with a lack of student accountability. Like, you know, these students, they, and I, I'm not speaking about our kids here, but and maybe our teachers feel this, they're never on, you know, what they want matters, what other people need doesn't, and this. The comments from these teachers, it was a long list of comments from the survey, and it was illuminating to me thinking about what our teachers might face when having one disruptive student or a student who did poorly on an exam and it blows up the week, his parents come in and yell, you know, I don't know if that happens, but it was clear it happens in education broadly. And anyway, that's a long-winded sort of preamble to whatever this discussion about how seems like how staff are accountable to achieve their goals, to put things into place, to be proactive in the classroom. Any sort of link to families, parents, and what, that, that, we also have expectations for your kids. And if they step outside of those, there are consequences and it ain't our fault, same thing, you know what I mean?
Right, and, and it's a, it's a broader picture, you know, instead of the, the state or the country thing and saying, you know, a nation at risk, these are the things that you're going to implement in your school district, or no child left behind. It's having educators at the table to say, not only do we want, do we want that, um, compliance of you have to score at this level and that's how we define you, but rather, what are the benefits of education? What do these students need, um, for them to be successful in life? And a lot of times, that's more of your character development and your core values and holding you accountable um, for some of those needs as well. And he talks about how, how you hold kids accountable and how they're not entitled, but they, yeah, there's an accountability that, that, um, the educators want a, a voice at the table to say, this is important in our schools and we wanna be recognized for that as well. Um, so yeah, that's John Tanner and you'll be getting information on that. And, um, the vouchers, this, um, has been going really well, a lot of conversations with those on our, in that policy group. Um, and then I spoke to our PAC, uh, superintendents on Friday and, um, I guess I was just kind of shocked, they were so very grateful for the information because we are so blessed here because we have people who are so passionate and brought all of that understanding to us and not all districts have that, so. Um, I think there is going to be a bigger push, so good work to our, our board and for your resolution and for being recognized on so many levels in the state right now. Um, and I guess one other thing to add, quite a while ago, we had that, the person who was driving erratically through, um, and that is still going on and, um.
Not the driving wreck.
Oh, I was gonna say one.
The, the consequences for the, the woman who was driving erratically.
That's why he took the cones out tonight.
Fifty K.
Record date is on January twenty-eighth, so. Did you ever check, I will, remember my call of the? Was that, again, the same person?
Um, no, something, another.
Okay. Yeah, haven't seen her back, so. Um, but I think that's all I have to offer, must there any other questions?
Jim, do you know what Emily's article is gonna be?
I haven't heard from her yet either, have you guys?
Well, just kind of called today, somebody's coming to her house tomorrow, take picture of it.
Oh.
So I don't.
From, for, um.
My aunt.
Nice.
Like she, you know, had dinner with.
Yes.
And they talked through and, but I, I don't know when it's coming out, I mean, she can ask the photographer.
Yeah, well, there were a few emails on it, you know, they're talking about the voucher issue got picked up by Emily, somebody, a reporter for the biggest newspaper in the Netherlands. The time she spent here, talking to all these people, different districts, many days, this is gonna be a big article, published in a, you know, a Dutch newspaper, but talking to Chris, it's possible, when it's written, to translate it and distribute it to publications.
Yeah, I think she's DC, you know, US DC rep for it, and she seemed pretty competent, you know. Chris tried out, she's like, give me names, I'm a very good investigative reporter, that's like, 'cause I think her view of it was talk to, you know, you guys and Chris and other community members, but I think she talked to a lot of parents who, kids were going to school for vouchers, that's kind of the issues come from, so it'd be interesting to see what she, what she writes, what she puts together. And I guess on that topic, I'm gonna, is it the affair, you know, just walking through all the things and that, Charles was there, who was running for, for, just, just like some of the other people, and she thanked us for, for leading the charge on this, or at least getting that information out there and, you know, same as other people said, she's like, you know, it, it takes a while for things to move, but it's important and people are listening, so keep up the good work.
Yeah.
Um, Grandparents' Day was last Friday, well-attended, everybody seemed to have a good time. Watch the school day, today was today, Sam and Dusty do that, mother and kids, um, walk from bridge back. Um, Scott, you're asking about the, came up in the budget for the CISA money and Allison is a speech teacher. And we shared her last year with the Farge and we have her full-time here this year, well, Monday through Thursday, she's awesome. I don't know how feel bad for the Farge, that's a great one for us, 'cause she does a phenomenal job and she's really good at what she does. Um, I met with Jim from CISA as part of our MLSS, it's looking at different systems together and he gave us some, as part of Act Twenty and making sure we have everything lined up, he gave us some assessments to try to target exactly what skills kids are missing in, um, in reading through K, actually pre-K through five. Um, we leveraged Sherry Von Ruden and Tracy to give all of them, so we can see some, if where we have any holes in our curriculum, things that we're missing from a kind of a system-wide, um, perspective. And we got a lot of good data with that, Jim's actually coming back on the fifteenth. Um, him and I are gonna meet in the morning and go through it, we have a bunch of spreadsheets. If you like data, kind of one to look at, um, and then we had our one, two fourth day of the principal, or the principal training and reading specialist training for Act Twenty today. Um, we have two days at CISA, then last Wednesday, you know, it was Wednesday, and then today, we did it. Um, we're asynchronous, we're Katie and Sarah Wallace and I met, we just sat in my room and we did it. We did, it was on a Zoom meeting and we went through stuff, there's a lot of moving parts of that. Um, there's some stuff I'll have to bring to the board about if a kid doesn't, isn't at the twenty-fifth percentile at the end of third grade, um, about promotion to fourth grade and I mean, we already have a promotion, promotion policy from fifth and the sixth, I think.
Fourth.
Fourth and the fifth, whichever one it was, um, but the plan has to follow them if they're not there at third, so I'll bring that to you when uh, the DPI is, gives us more clarification, 'cause there were a bunch of questions that were asked today that they couldn't answer 'cause DPI hasn't, hasn't let it out yet. But, uh, the actual personalized reading plan and the assessment they're going to use and how it's gonna be set up, I feel, oh, I feel pretty good about it. I mean, it's a matter of, like anything else, the first time you do it, you'll find out where it is. Um, and all the kids' names are into the Ames web screener stuff, so that should be good. Um, that's it, that's kind of what's been going on, things are pretty good downstairs.
Thanks, Andy.
Yep.
All right, um, first thing with a month and a half in, and I guess a little bit going back to what Scott you said and Kim said, it's been the best start we've had in a lot of years. it's been the best start we've had in a lot of years, um I just feel really positive, um student body is really good, positive, respectful, accountable, um I feel the staff is very happy, it just makes, it's a trickle effect of what you've said, so I really feel um, found a great start, so kudos to the staffs, kudo to the students. Um, just really knock on wood, it's been a really good start and going well, so it's good to see. Um, this week is homecoming week, so with that, we had activities today, um lots of things going on with game and stuff. Um Mrs. Malfe Student Council did a great job with all the activities today and the things that happened. Um today, the, the juniors beat the staff in volleyball for the first time ever that anyone knows of in the staff volleyball game, so.
Staff's getting older.
Yeah. Tried to give me a play, I said, the new rule is everyone under forty has to play, anybody under forty plays, everybody else, we don't have to. Um but that was, that was the first time it happened, so. Um some career things, on September tw- thirtieth, the juniors went to a career day at UWL, so we got to explore some things to look into. On October second, um we had a number of kids that went to a UW-Plattville Construction Career Day specifically to that. Um some things also in addition to that with career stuff, I'm looking at things, we have um two kids right now taking some classes at UW-Plattville and four kids taking some classes at Southwest Tech as far as specific career paths that they're looking at. Uh, the board rep we talked about, which um, you know, kind of going back to with Anna being here, but they will plan to start the Student Council Board Rep next month. Um part of that will be, there's a lot of it's gonna be, we're gonna send out to the teachers to really try to get some info to highlight some of those things that are happening in classes, so I think if we could, Marla to just jot down for the agenda, if we can put them at the beginning so they can kind of share the report and then kind of go along. Uh but hopefully it'll give a, a little broader perspective of some of the highlights and things that are happening um with the classes and if there's anything else as a board you would want to see, you just, you know, we can kind of tweak that and go, but um hopefully it'll be a positive and a good thing. And the last thing, um state test scores came out for everybody here in the last week. Um so in November, we'll have the test scores report that we normally have and, and go through that with everyone as well, so. That's what I have, any questions from anybody?
The student rep, is it, how are the students?
They're actually gonna, it's Student Council kid, so they're gonna, they're gonna rotate from what I understand, they're gonna um have somebody you know, try to rotate it through for people, so.
And they'll have, so freshmen, sophomores might not have their drivers, it'll be up to them to get here if they're.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly, I mean, they'll, they'll go through, you know, there will be a mix, so.
I, I like that idea, that's what we talked about there.
Yeah. All right, anybody else, any questions?
Yeah, so what was like the third to the last thing?
Uh, career stuff, or, okay.
Thank you, yeah, exactly. Um you mentioned Southwest Tech.
Yep.
A year or so ago, that banner that's hanging in the lunchroom upstairs, we got a presentation, we had
Yep.
so many students in the career readiness, or I can't remember the whole, so are those students?
No, it's not necessarily specific to that, um you know, that, that's more the apprenticeship and work-study kids and things, um these are kids who actually are trying to go a path and taking college classes in regard to um things that they're looking at, so. Um could be somewhat associated, but not, not directly um to that, so.
Thank you, Aaron, any other? Something back to mine, if I can go back to Kim. Um Andy, just having to mention the farts and the, any discussions with Megan about it, do you?
Yeah, we keep talking about it, um.
Maybe, I mean, it, because these things linger on, it's not evident, so maybe, does everybody still want it?
Yeah.
Well, do we want it, maybe, is there a?
Why were we going to, was there an issue or just?
Well, to explore other ways to cooperate, like we've got the athletic teams, we've got Spanish position and just you know, maybe.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to have a joint meeting at some point, please.
And they're willing and want to too, I think it's just Megan and I just need to nail down a month or.
It's not like anything, any big action is gonna be taken, you really don't even take any board action, it's just discussion of different, you know, possibilities and stuff.
Brainstorming.
Yeah. I'm sure we have a ton of issues in government, so.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, I, I guess if we if we want to be, it would be nice to format the meeting, really put a lot of foresight into it, just so we know.
Yeah, we'll probably have to check on what we have to do if I remember right. It's been a while since we did it, that each, each board actually convenes a meeting and goes through uh proof of publication and that kind of thing at the beginning, so it's because it's still an open meeting of
That's right.
Both boards are just in the same place. And we never had any action, we had sort of a loose agenda, we never had any board action right there. Not that we couldn't at some point, but.
Hey, with that, uh we will convene, but sorry, didn't mean to jump anybody out again.
I'm ready for that one.
You ready?
Keep her moving.
Yeah.
Convene to close session according to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen twenty-eight five. Paragraph one, part C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises, responsibility, purposes tonight, winter coaching positions and superintendent evaluation. And we'll entertain motion there.
Motion, motion convene to close session.
Motion by Earl, second by Janet, roll call, please, Marla.
Josh Schrader.
Yes.
Janet Mathis.
Yes.
Bro Wallace.
Yes.
Rich James.
Yes.
Isaac Wallace.
Yes.
Peggy McCormick.
Yes.
Scott Walters.
Yes. Need an open session?
So.
Motion by Jim, second by Isaac, we convene an open session, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are in open session. Where we have some motions.
And go through each one separately or just go through the whole list and then do this?
It's nine thirty-seven, how about all we do?
Motion approved, Eric Wiggle as head ba- girl basketball, Kevin Taylor and assistant, head boys basketball, Matt Wood with assistant, Mike Kaufman. Head wrestling, Dustin Clemmons with assistant, Trey Clemmons. At girls wrestling, Leah Gross, the assistant. Girls wrestling, Kevin Townsend. Volunteer wrestling, girls wrestling, Stacey Snyder. Volunteer boys and girls, Maverick McCollig, McCollig. Randy Schwartz, Kyle Montgomery, James Benzer. Gary Bukanik. Nikki Lewis and Erin Townsend. Middle school boys, basketball head is Ryan Wiggle and no assistant at this time. And head girls is Ryan Wiggle, no assistant at the time, and at middle school wrestling, who's to be announced later. That's it, on my list.
All second. All of them. So motion by Earl, second by Isaac, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes, that brings us to the end of our business this fine evening, one motion to. Motion by Isaac, second by Peggy, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.